And it's magic time.
Okay.
Well, good evening and welcome, everybody. At 6:30. We won't comment on that, so. Welcome, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 12, 2019, at 6:30. I'm glad you're all here. We will start tonight's proceedings, and I'm calling this meeting on the Wausau City Council to order. I will start with a pledge of allegiance for everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one moment, please. Okay, please press yes to take roll call. Whoops, one more time. Yeah, now you can press yes to take roll call. Ms. Kelbuck, I didn't get your -- it didn't go in there, but I'm going to put it on record. So we currently do have eight members present. We do have a quorum. Mrs. Rasmussen had to -- yeah, she had to duck out. I haven't heard from Gary or Mrs. Tau, but I'm presuming they'll be here shortly.
We have no proclamations tonight and nobody registered to speak. However, I do like to surprise people and recognize employees when they do something really great. So tonight, I'm very proud to announce that, once again, the prestigious Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the city of Wausau by the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. Mary Ann Groth, along with Robert Splinter, Valerie Swanberg, and Jennifer Norton are all acknowledged for their thorough fiscal responsibility for the city. The full finance department has worked diligently in preparing this award-winning report each year. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. This report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and to motivate potential users and user groups to read this report. Congratulations, Mary Ann, and to finance. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We do have one request by Mr. Smith for file 99-1020 to be pulled for the resolution authorizing the lease agreement of the city-owned property adjacent to 206 Grand Avenue Schofield, but we will go back to the consent agenda, starting with file number 19-0201, the minutes of the previous open session meeting from February 19 of this year, and ending with file number 19-0108, a resolution approving or denying various licenses as indicated. Can I get a motion from somebody, please? A motion by Mr. Peckham. Do I have a second? By Mr. Neal, thank you, to accept.
That motion passed unanimously.
And now bringing forward, excuse me, file number 99-1020, a resolution of the Finance Committee authorizing the lease agreement of city-owned property adjacent to 206 Grand Avenue Schofield for Cause Holdings Limited Partnership to be announced for Pro Players Sports Bar and Grill. Committee action approved four to zero, the fiscal impact, and annual revenue of approximately $1,200. And I'll take a motion to accept. Thank you, Mr. Martins, and a second by Mr. Neal.
Mr. Smith.
And Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I voted for this in finance. I just had a couple of questions. This $1,200 would normally cover the -- what the assessed property taxes would be on that piece of property or real close to it? Probably shouldn't ask that question. Maybe it's more, but who are you looking that one up? Have we ever thought of selling this property? I know it's on the flight plan or the landing plan for the airport, but it's heckin' gone from the airport. I mean, it's right on Grand Avenue and Schofield. Well, if you could -- Mary Ann, you could get that to me later. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, if you look in the lease agreement under fees, the computation is assuming an assessed value of $4 per square foot and then multiplying that by the current tax rate.
Well, yeah. The reason I couldn't figure it out is because it doesn't give you the square feet of the property in the lease.
Oh, sure. Right.
In any event.
But I mean, it is around $1,200 because we -- this is a continuation of lease, so that's about what we've -- we have been receiving in the past. But yeah, I couldn't tell you offhand what the square footage is. I mean, I could back into the numbers.
The leasing is responsible for the snow plowing and everything. They have to take care of that.
Right.
One last thing. Is he current? Is the person current on the rent in 2019? When does that payment due?
He's not current right now. I believe there was -- this is a family, and there was some communication disruption with the family, so then that's really what caused the lease agreement to be updated because we contacted the city attorney's office and said they haven't been paying, and then the city attorney's office contacted them, and they were confused, and so they are current now. Oh, okay, so they must have just become current because they weren't current.
Okay.
Like, within the last 30 days, they weren't current. So now, if they are current.
In the lease, does it tell him when he has to pay for 2019? Is that the end of 2019 or is it the beginning of 2019?
Let me read it. So we invoice them, I think, in the month of December annually, something like that.
And that's for the coming year?
And then it's due in January. And so they had not paid last year's, so we have not invoiced them for this year's yet because now we were waiting for this lease to get approved.
Okay.
So we will invoice them as soon as this is approved. That's my recollection.
So they've paid 18, but they haven't paid -- we haven't invoiced them for 19 yet.
Correct.
Okay, we'll be doing that shortly, though.
Yeah, we'll do it this week.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the sole source of parking space for this business? Is this like overflow parking or?
I think they have other parking on the side of their building as well. This is just parking from behind.
Is this piece too small to be developable other than as a parking lot?
It's my understanding that it's part of the Wausau Downtown Airport, so it cannot be developed and it cannot be sold.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
We have a motion by Martin, so a second by Neal. You may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Moving on with the rest of the resolutions and ordinances for file number 19-0301. Mayor's appointments, there are none tonight. Moving on to file number 12-0217, a joint resolution of the Human Resources Committee and a committee of the whole and the Finance Committee approving the compensation study. Committee action, Human Resources approved four to one for option three with that other one. Committee of the whole approved eight to three, and Finance approved five to zero. The fiscal impact will be no budgetary impact here in 2019. I entertain a motion to accept. A motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Ms. McElhaney, thank you. Mr. Neal.
Okay, thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Just sort of clarification, when we've had so many discussions, several meetings on the various permutations that are all covered in this resolution. The compensation model, the wage model or what have you that we discussed and voted upon included verbiage related to an option one, an option two, and an option three. Early on, we determined option one was not really an option, and the discussion came to the viability of option two or of option three. Option three being determined to be the most difficult to sustain financially in our current state of affairs. Option two seemed to be sustainable. The overriding sentiment in the HR committee, shown by the four to one vote, was to really try to pursue option three. In further discussions in our committee of the whole and whatnot, we came to the agreement that option two would be adopted for this year, and option three would then would be implemented in the following year. I'm pretty sure that's the case. It was not anything like option three would be looked into or considered, but it seemed to be pretty solid verbiage in our meeting that option two was the immediate adoption and option three would follow in a year's time. So I want to make sure that everybody's clear on that or that we get clarification before we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Tom, you and I were at the same meeting, but I didn't hear the same thing you did. I heard that we would take a look at possibly funding option three if it was viable, but I don't think anything was cast in stone that option three is going to be happening next year.
Mr. -- I --
I'm pretty sure.
That's kind of what I remember, too, frankly.
As I am? Oh, you're seeing as Mr. Smith?
That's because, you know, frankly, we just didn't have it this year. That money already been budgeted and set aside.
Correct.
But for 2020, to do the best we can as far as trying to implement that, but I don't think it was -- I don't think it was actually approved or that contingent, if you will, in the resolution or to be decided that that's what we were going to do for sure in 2020, to definitely try, but not set in stone. And I could be wrong, but there's a couple of us that.
I wish we had Alder Rasmussen here to add her memory to this discussion because at the time, and yet, sure, you know, sometimes my hearing can be faulty, but I was pretty pleased at the -- at that point when we expressed our decision, so I'm pretty sure that was what I heard.
Okay. Mr. Nutting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's -- I think it was the majority's intent that we would desire to
Right.
-- achieve option three.
And I think, Ms. Rasmussen, would agree with that.
And strive toward that, and that would be my desire, too, although the argument was there and pretty succinctly expressed that option three was not affordable at this point in time, but we want to strive for option three for the benefit of our employees, and that's my thoughts, too. But yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mary Ann.
If you read the second whereas on the backside of the resolution, it does say that it was recommended that the adjustment of employee salary beyond midpoint to be considered for implementation with the 2020 budget. So I believe both Tony and I felt that when we're preparing the 2020 budget, we will have those costs isolated and the financial impact of those for finance and council's consideration. So you'll definitely have an opportunity to implement that within the 2020 budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gisselman.
Yes, I voted for this originally in HR as option three when it came to the committee of the whole, the switch towards option two there, and I voted against it at that time. My feeling is that I think the city could have went along, further along in trying to opt for option three. I think that we can do better. I think option three is the best thing that we could have done for the employees. I spoke to that a variety of times, so I think you know how I feel, so thus I'll be voting against it at this point because I think we really should have worked harder in trying to find the money and trying to find the -- so that we can do better by our employees. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Okay, well, I do apologize if I was listening with happy ears at the time. I'm getting some feedback here that perhaps I was. I would encourage maybe Mr. Lindman to chime in because you were there for the various discussions and whatnot, and I'd value your interpretation of what was decided upon.
Maybe we should have the HR director.
Sure.
I'm going to reland my memory, huh? So I do, I mean, I guess I would like it to be how you interpret it, but the conversations were that the council and the Finance Committee would consider it within the budget for 2020 and see what was feasible at that time when the budget comes around, but it would be the intent that they would consider option three moving into 2020.
Go ahead, Tommy.
And I just want to be clear that, you know, to me, and it's always been in our discussions, option two was not a bad option. You know, option three was just, you know, a more desirable one.
And something we will strive for for 2020.
And I've even, you know, along the way campaigned for like option, you know, 2.5 and whatnot. So, you know, that didn't go anywhere.
The numbers weren't behind it, Tom, so.
So I don't want to, you know, make it seem as if I am opposed to option two, and I will support this.
Okay, excellent.
All right. No further discussion. We have a motion by Neal, second by McElhaney, and you may begin voting. That motion has passed seven to two.
File number 18-1004, a resolution in the Economic Development Committee approving a three-month due date extension of the percentage rent access cash flow payment provision of the air rights and ground lease agreement for the Wausau Center Mall. Committee action approved four to zero. I don't have a fiscal impact on that, I'm sorry. I think, like, $13,000?
The last payment was $13,000.
Last payment was $13,000.
But that doesn't mean that this payment would be $13,000.
Right. It's to be determined, basically. Thank you. And Mr. Schach is here. If anybody's got any questions, otherwise? Okay, let me get a motion and stuff first, please. Could I get a motion to move it forward? Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst, thank you. Mr. Schach, could you come forward, please? And Mr. Smith.
Well, McElhaney, I guess, was first.
Okay. I didn't see her.
She didn't have a light on, sneaking in there.
I guess just to verify, it would have no fiscal impact because it's just in a three-month extension.
Right. I just wanted to understand the three-month extension period.
Sure. Yeah, the committee discussed this. We had received through our attorney a request from the mall owner, who is the lender, you know, as they are working to -- you may recall, last year, they made a payment, you know, based on this excess cash flow payment of $13,000, as was mentioned, and, you know, this year, they, you know, they plan to make a request or put together a proposal to amend or to address that provision because, obviously, they -- we understand they don't believe that they will have an excess cash flow, you know, for 2018, and so they'd like, you know, to put together some kind of proposal. The timeline for the submission of that payment was approaching, so they've requested an extension of time to, you know, to review that and to craft their proposal for your consideration. So I believe the committee, and anyone can chime in, you know, felt that it was reasonable while they draft their proposal to allow them an extension of time for the due date. And that's all that this is doing. It's just extending the due date by three months.
One other question quickly is that are they behind or have they been behind in any rent or lease payments or anything?
No, not at this time, I believe.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, they're asking us to do them a favor, and then I would ask them, you know, what have they done for us lately, which I don't think they've done anything. I mean, we have a current agreement that tells them when payment is due. They've known this, and the fact that they've sat on their hands and all of a sudden now they feel they need three or four more months to get their act together is really not the city's problem.
I'm not going to argue with you, sir.
Okay. Well, that's good. I was kind of looking forward to that.
Normally, I really enjoy it, but, you know, I.
Come on, you were the highlight of my day.
I know, I know. I apologize.
So, like I said, I can't support this. I mean, this is the way it's done. Of course, they're probably not going to make the payment anyway because they're late all the time anyway, so what difference does it make? This time, they're just trying to be nice about it instead of just ignoring us, so I can't support this. The deal's a deal, and when it's due, it's due. That's the way it goes. I'm sure if they were on the other end, they'd hold us to it, and I'd like to see some action down there. I'd like to see, instead of people leaving the mall, I'd like to see some vendors coming in, and I'm sure you would, too, since we own the third largest retail spot down there, and the more people that leave, the less attractive it is for us to be able to market that spot. We paid, I think, $600,000 for. It would be nice to see somebody show some interest in that, but since the mall gets all the traffic of a leper colony, I don't think that we're going to get too much anymore.
Oh, there's so much I want to say, but I can't.
I know. Well, it's just, I think, from a staff perspective, we felt that it was a reasonable request, given that we are aware that they are crafting a proposal for your consideration, which you can duly vote down at that time, but it did seem like an appropriate request to grant a three-month extension while they work to calculate or craft their proposal, although I understand your.
Well, I was just going to say, not that I'm defending them, but if you recall, we didn't settle the previous years until December of 2018. So, you know, we were arm-wrestling, I guess, about whether they needed to make the payment, whether they needed the audit, up until the very last minute, which, of course, they were delinquent, but we had been negotiating about, you know, a variety of different developments, and in all of those scenarios, we were going to abate this.
Correct.
I guess permanently remove it from the computation. So I.
And of course, the audit well exceeds the payments, and so they're just kind of pointing out, you know, the irony of doing an audit to justify a payment that is far less than the audit costs. Again, they're going to craft a proposal. This is just a three-month extension to the due date.
Right, and if we don't give an extension, they either are facing default on the agreement, which then is bad as far as they're concerned because they, you know, the city has ramifications that they can impose because of that default, which is to take ownership of the asset, basically, through a long, lengthy process, and they don't want us to start that. So that's why they're asking for this instead of just ignoring it. Right?
I believe so, yeah. They just want to follow the rules, so, or this time they want to.
Mr. Martins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think the sticking point here in what Finance brought to our attention is that it is a $10,000 report to figure out that they need to pay, you know, $13,000 in the excess cash flow, so that does, yeah, it does definitely seem ironic, and I believe, you know, giving them the extension for them to come up with, you know, maybe some kind of proposal to, for a payment in lieu of this audited report, although, you know, for whatever, if whatever amount of excess cash flow, you know, they may have. My only concern is that is if the report's not audited, you know, are they either, would they have the possibility of hiding, you know, some of the funds or not accurately reporting what is, you know, is considered excess cash, or there needs to be some kind of a control in place so that, you know, we feel that their proposal is made in good faith and is sort of a competent one.
Sure, and I guess, so you're correct, and that's why I think the audit provision was included in the original agreement, but I believe that their request will likely not necessarily request another mechanism or another process of payment, but rather an, you know, abatement or removal of payment based upon whatever they're going to be proposing. So again, we haven't received that proposal yet. They are requesting time to draft the proposal. That's all that we're talking about today.
Mr. Nutting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question doesn't have anything to do with that subject, but what has come to my mind is, just a curiosity, is what kind of ongoing communication do we have with the entity? And if you could explain as to what, do they report to us with plans or thoughts?
Sure. Yeah.
I mean, and we've, you know, continued to provide updates to the ED Committee, as you know, somewhat, but, you know, the mall owner is not required necessarily to update the city, but we have had, you know, kind of productive continued conversations. You know, I think the mayor's position has been quite clear, you know, in the stakeholder consensus statement that the city, you know, has issued to them about certain steps that we'd like them to take to move the mall forward. We think those steps are the most, you know, practical and pragmatic ways to see meaningful redevelopment of the mall. They're not willing or unable to take those steps at this point for, you know, perhaps a variety of reasons, but that's what we're aware of, you know. But perhaps that will change. Perhaps their proposal will imply what changes they will make. Obviously, from a staff perspective, we'd hope that any proposal that we would recommend would have meaningful, you know, would have some kind of meaningful motion, forward motion to it that, you know, moved the property in a more positive direction.
Okay, no other comment? We have a motion by Neal, second by McElhaney. You may begin voting. That motion has passed seven to two.
File number 19-0304, a resolution in the Economic Development Committee authorizing the lease of the Riverlife Market Concession Building to Brick Soft Serve Limited for the seasonal operation of a soft-serve ice cream and quick-serve food item business. Committee action approved four to zero. And again, I do not have the fiscal impact on that. Does somebody have that or no? I thought it was $1,200, but just wanted to be sure.
Well, it would be, so I guess it's not a net, it's in the positive $12,000 a year. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Peckham. Mr. Neal.
Thank you yet again, Mr. Mayor. This is a wonderful thing, for one thing, and I'm sure all of us are very happy to entertain it, and.
Who doesn't like ice cream?
Oh, you know, who doesn't like me?
Well, pardon me.
There, our packet does not include, at this point, the verbiage for the agreement itself, nor does it really include the, what's referred to here as the March 1, 2019 revised Discussion here that, well, maybe, I'm just going to move to amend this resolution to remove the words "as amended" by the committee. Because if you just go a few words prior to that, we're, you know, looking to authorize and execute a lease agreement in substantial conformance with the terms proposed in the March 1, 2019 revised proposal, as amended by the committee. That amendment in the committee, and one that I did not welcome, at first seemed to just be shifting some words around, and then, since I don't have the actual verbiage in front of me here, the discussion also went to, we're looking at every three years, a 3% increase in the rent, the lease rate. And the discussion started dwelling around, is it 3%? Is it up to 3%? Or is it at least 3%? And my feeling was the amendment that was being proposed was the verbiage would be at least 3%. I oppose that, and. I oppose that and want to make sure that this agreement reflects conformance with the proposal that was received from the proposer. And that is a three-year term with a 3% increase at the end of each three-year term, and they are repeatable. And they are negotiable, but we do not include verbiage, something stating at least 3%. Because, you know, three years from now, if the substantial chemistry of this council changes, I just don't want to look at somebody up here saying, "I think we need 100% increase because this is just not enough money for the city." And it's really important, and I've said this all along, that that building down there is a park amenity that we built for the people. And we sought then somebody to help us turn it into a destination, a service, not a money-making opportunity for the city. I don't want to treat our partner as somebody that we were going to dicker with every three years to try and squeeze some more out of them if they're doing well. That's not what we're here to do for that amenity in a park. So, I just want to make sure I'm going to propose an amendment that we take away this verbiage about "as amended by the committee" and make sure it's in substantial conformance with the proposal we received from the proposer. I welcome Mr. Schock to come up and add any clarity to what I've said, and I hope somebody will second and that we will have that happen. Thank you.
Before we go, can I get a second on that? Second by Mr. Nutting. Thank you. Continue. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Looking at this, and, you know, I hear a lot from Tom about these are amenities, and we do this and that, and that's great. And I realize we do have to make investments, but, you know, an amenity is paid for by the taxpayers. Now, if Mr. Neal wants to kick in some bucks towards the building or towards the overhead, I'm good with it, you know? I'm sure your check won't bounce, so just, you know, get out that checkbook and that pen and start writing. I think we should always at least try to break even or come close to it. So, the question I have... I've got my paperwork here. How did we... Is this going to be operated only a certain number of months out of the year?
So, the proposal is, yes, it's a seasonal operation. Obviously, the building is really designed for that. It has no interior space, so it is a seasonal... It's a seasonal building. But the proposer would pay rent every month all year.
Okay. So, if it's only open X number of months out of the year, isn't that a detriment to the ambiance that goes on or the... That down there? I mean, people are going to walk up and down there all year. I don't think everybody's going to quit in October and not go down there anymore. They serve ice cream over on Grand Avenue at the Dairy Queen 12 months out of the year.
Again, I mean, I don't know how you want to debate this. The building is... It was always designed and thus built as a seasonal building. It has no interior space, you know, to... Doesn't have a drive-through or any features. You could walk up to it, I suppose, but, you know...
Well, I assume it has some type of heating and cooling system in it, does it not?
I assume, yes.
Okay. So, if it has a heating and cooling system, it could be heated, it could be maintained all year, people walking up there, and I'm not debating this, I'm just asking questions.
Yeah. Well, again, the RFP did not require a certain, you know, a certain minimum amount of time for the operation, and it didn't require a minimum rent payment or any kind of, you know, calculation. It sought a partner to, you know, activate the space and utilize the space, and the committee, you know, reviewed those.
So, the $1,000 came from people are going to lease this building?
That's correct.
Okay. Who's going to own the equipment that's going to go in this building?
So, the... There is... Depends on which set of equipment. There is some equipment that's more permanent in the building, the, you know, coolers and kind of durable items, which are owned by... Which will be owned by the city. And the vending equipment, you know, the soft-serve machines and other equipment are owned by the provider.
Okay. And he will maintain his equipment, and the city will maintain what belongs to us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Grohl.
Oh, I was just going to say that, you know, you mentioned the Dairy Queen, but they're serving meals all year round, which is why they're able to sustain, you know, business. When you look at all the other models of the ice cream that are just ice cream, they're not open all year round.
Many of them are seasonal, yes. But, again, I think you could have debated what is appropriate, but this proposal was a seasonal proposal, so, at least at this point, you know? But they are paying rent all year long, and, you know...
Mr. Peckham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the amendment, and as far as I was concerned, I made it at ED. And as far as I was concerned, it was just a matter of making it clear. The original wording was that there would be a 3% increase or an amount to be negotiated, and I just felt that the fact that it could be negotiated should be mentioned first. And that's all that happened with that amendment, was that it was mentioned first. There's no... I mean, it just... I think it makes it more clear that, you know, we're not going to lock the 3% increase in for perpetuity.
And Mr. Neal.
Where do I begin? Mr. Smith, I appreciate your, you know, your kind of hard-boiled business sense, and I, you know, and I get it. But, you know, when I do talk about, you know, park amenities, I include a whole slew of things that we build into our park system, that, like, you know, right next to this, you know, proposed concession is a playground park. You know, we're not going to charge admission to that to break even. We're not going to put, you know, nickel slots on the drinking fountains or anything else of that nature. We built this amenity, you know, for a purpose, and then we sought somebody to provide a service within it. And somebody came forward with, I think, an attractive offer. And also, this is a local business that has proven its track record of being a stable and well-loved business, and I think it's a great addition to the riverfront. I don't think that... I'm just not happy about the idea of dickering with them to try and squeeze more out of them. I think they're... Actually, their first offer came in at $750 a month, and they came back with $1,000 a month. Very happy with that. I don't want to squeeze an extra $200 a month out of them. I don't see any need to go down that route. Also, the concession proposer gave us verbiage that they were happy with, and I thought we were happy with, and wanted to go with that verbiage. And right now, we have something in front of us that says, "We're going to approve it as amended," and the amendment isn't even really in front of us. I'm not for that at all. I want to go back to what was proposed. It says in substantial conformance. I want that to happen. I want that to be written up to reflect, you know, the intent of the proposer and the intent of the committee. Barring the discussion we had about switching words around, and all due respect to Mr. Peckham, who wanted to switch some words around, I didn't feel that was necessary. But in that discussion was talk about at least 3%. And that made me nervous, because in three years from now, I don't know who's going to step up and say, "No, it should be 200%." I don't know. I don't want to go down that road. I want to have a partnership with this business. It has predictability and stability, and it'll become a destination for our riverfront. So, I don't want to beat this to death, but let's look at it for what it is. It's a wonderful proposal. It's a wonderful addition to our riverfront, and let's not try and detail it to death.
And now, back to Mr. Smith.
And the saga continues.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Neal, you and I could debate this until the wee hours of the morning, I'm sure.
But we won't.
And...
I'll put a stop to that right now, so...
Well, like I said, I know that we can't, you know, we shouldn't try to make money on everything, although I do like the idea about the... I'll have to give that some thought.
A dime.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that, you know, I look at it from the people that read this in the paper and say, "Oh, what a sweetheart deal this is, you know? Who does he know that he got that in?" We try to eliminate whenever we can, even though that's almost impossible to do. I'm not opposed to this, and I'm going to vote in favor of it. I just had some questions that I felt need to be answered in case later somebody asks me. That's all. Thank you.
And once again, compromise is made, so...
Okay. I just want to repeat the amendment, to make sure I've got it detailed. Mr. Neal and Mr. Nutting, you did second on this motion. And it would be to amend the file 190304, to remove, in quotes, "as amended by the committee," end quote, and to make sure that in substantial confirmation... Conformity, conformance, yeah, of the agreement with the proposal, that within a three-year term of at least 3% increase each year. Okay. Does everyone understand what we're voting on, even...
No. Yeah, just to verify. So, the amended version was "at least." The original version was "at 3%." And I believe your amendment is to set it at 3%.
So, removing the "at least"?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Yep? Okay. Okay, now everyone knows what we're voting on? Thank you for the clarification. And this is on the amendment, so you may begin voting. That motion has passed, eight to one.
File... Whoops, excuse me. Now, we can vote on the original as amended on council floor.
Okay. And this one was a motion by Nutting, second by Peckham, and you may begin voting. That motion has passed, eight to one.
File number 19-0207, an ordinance of the Plan Commission, rezoning 1101 South Fourth Avenue from an R3 to family residence district to a B3 general commercial district. Committee action approved six to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbst. Do I have a second? By Mr. Martins. Thank you. Ms. McElhaney.
In looking through the packet, I just wanted to know if the neighbors... Yeah. If the neighbors' issues or worries about lighting and some kind of a barrier between their house and the gas pumps was addressed. That's all.
Mr. Lindman, thank you. You can come forward.
Yeah, so, this would be on the Chris Doyle, Fourth Avenue and Thomas Street, and so they're proposing to put some gas tanks there. There is a fence already on that neighbor's property as well, and there were some of these items that were brought up in Plan Commission as well, so...
That's kind of what I wanted to know, because it didn't say that those were addressed at all.
Right.
And, you know, I read the letter that she had, you know, about the lighting and stuff, and I just wondered if they were addressed, because I didn't see that.
Yeah, and I know Bill is going to work with Chris when they develop that design and when they put that in, that the lighting is downlighting, it's black sky. Yeah. So, Bill will, you know, make sure that...
Bill Herbst from Inspections, for clarification.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Peckham.
Yeah, thank you. As a member of Planning Commission, I was in on that, and the gentleman representing Chris did explain how the lighting was going to be arranged, and it sounds like it's going to be well-managed to not intrude on the neighboring property. And I believe they also asked about where the, you know, if there are going to be underground storage tanks. And my recollection is that there will not be, that they're going to connect the pumps that are going to be in the new area to the existing tanks, and so there's not going to be, you know, new underground storage tanks parked right next to the house. So, that... The Planning Commission didn't have any problem with it after that discussion.
All right. You may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Rule one, section D. A two-third vote is required. Motion by Mr. Peckham, second by Mr. Nutting.
Motion passed unanimously.
File number 04-0210, a resolution of the Common Council approving the termination of an easement with Miss Beth O'Malley. Committee action approved five to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Ms. Kalabak is the first, Mr. Smith is the second.
That motion passed unanimously.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving acquisition of 226 East Thomas Street. Committee action approved five to zero. Fiscal impact will be $51,500. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Ms. Herbst.
Begin voting. Motion has passed, seven to two.
And then, we have an addendum from last night, and some issues with HR resolutions. First one's file number 12-0219, a resolution of the Human Resources Committee amending the employee handbook language in section 8.01, general provisions. Committee action approved five to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by Ms. McElhaney.
Motion passed unanimously.
File number 12-0219, another resolution of the Human Resources Committee amending the employee handbook language in section 4.06, separation of employment. Committee action approved five to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbst, second by Ms. Kalabak.
That motion has passed unanimously.
And file number 12-0219, another resolution of the Human Resources Committee amending the employee handbook language to grant HR limited authority to negotiate vacation time at the time of hire. Committee action approved five to zero. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by Mr. Smith. Sorry, Mikey beat you.
Begin voting. Motion has passed, eight to one.
And as always, at this time, I'll open up the floor. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak about any issues on tonight's agenda or anything else going on with the city, now's your chance. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on an issue? Once again, anybody want to come forward and speak? And last but not least, anybody want to speak? All right. That part is closed. However, Mr. Nutting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to extend my thanks again to our city crews for their diligence and work ongoing with snow abatement, et cetera. It's a job well done, and we're thankful for all these efforts, again.
You beat me to the punch, but honestly... Kudos. And once again, it's going to be July before we know it. Mr. Peckham.
Yeah, I just wanted to invite anybody from District One or any other district to a District One constituent meeting that I will be holding with County Supervisor Rosenberg at the airport on Saturday, the 23rd. I believe the date is like nine to noon. And we are going to have some additional folks come there, Michael Loy, to talk about the North Central healthcare development, and we'll be trying to update folks on when those presentations are going to occur. But everybody's welcome, coffee and cookies. Yeah. We...
All right. Seeing there's nothing else coming forward, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody waits on that one. Mr. Martins was first, Mr. Neal was second.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a delightful evening.